All right, so we'll have the videos on. Starting with local. EB, don't be present.
Joe Normal.
Present.
EB Minor.
Here.
Seth MacGinn.
Present.
So just with similar to what we did in the last couple of meetings, there hasn't been a chair person appointed. Yeah, this board has to designate a person for tonight's meeting only. I'm getting confused on what. So first night's meeting would do the same thing, somebody would make a motion to appoint a chairperson for a night meeting only. Then the second, you know. There. A moment, send me a second. John and then send it to EB and then show it to him as he can follow these data. I. Wouldn't lie about everybody else. Send it to you, yes, that's fine. Okay, so John will be our here person. And keep the more questions.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, if you would, the committee please stand and we'll say a flagrant release. I'd like to leave it just to the fact that in that particular area. Thank you all. First item is administrative item. Can I have a motion from the board, please, regarding adopting the meeting minutes from the March sixth meeting? Okay, Jack, Jack has made the motion, do we have a second, please? I'll second. Stephen has had a seconded motion. All those in favor of adopting the meeting minutes as they've been presented to us, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you all. Meeting minutes have been adopted. Pardon me. So first, we have one item of old business. PL ZBA two zero two four zero 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 five. This is an application for a use variance. The applicant is Centerline Communications, behalf of AT&amp;T. Is the applicant here this evening? Good evening. If you don't mind, please, for the record. Could you speak into the microphone, please? I appreciate it, please identify yourself.
My name is from the last clue, is that what you want to address or just Centerline Communication?
I think that's fine.
Some boards want to know where you live.
Thank you very much. Okay. There was a discussion, a brief discussion of the proposal at the last meeting. And we were provided some materials regarding your application. Materials were provided by your council. In the interim, the city's council has provided the board with additional materials about the laws covering, and it's federal laws, covering the zoning board's review of a utilities application for a variance. Correct? I have to ask our council, if you don't mind, please, I need some clarification before we move forward. In the materials. I'm borrowing words. It says the utility has to show a need for the facilities. Okay. Does the need have to be particular to that utility? Because we're talking about a cellphone tower.
Right, so what that essentially means is a gap in coverage.
Is that a gap in, in this case, it's for cellphone coverage? Is that a gap just for this carrier? Is there a multiple carriers?
Right, you can't discriminate against carriers, so the argument like, oh, well, you know, AT&amp;T doesn't have coverage in this area, but Verizon does, so everybody should go get Verizon's web. That's not on legal basis for which to deny the application, so when you're discussing, when we're discussing gap in coverage and the need for this particular antenna of services, like what have you, you work specific to this carrier, you can compare it other carriers.
Okay, thank you. So I'm sorry for the, for the interruption, sidetrack, but if you would please, can you speak to AT&amp;T's coverage in the area that we're talking about?
Yeah, the area, it was trying to improve the coverage, they didn't have the coverage yet, and it's also would be on the test, so they need to offload coverage. It's a place that RPI, and this, this, the line is like between five hundred Federal Street and the RPI, RPI site. So there's two solutions that this is going to provide.
Okay, so it's situation, there is some coverage, this is going to improve it. Would would your coverage be improved by either updating or leaving the equipment in place that's at RPI?
The equipment RPI is going to stay, it's overloaded, it says it's happening, so they have to offload some of the data that goes to that site to another site. That for one of the purposes. Location.
Thank you, in my head, I thought the equipment at RPI was, was being deconvention, but it's done already. Okay. At this point, it's okay, I'm going to throw it open to the rest of the board. If anyone else has any questions regarding the application.
Yes, tied to John's point, and based on the council's clarification of the standard of substantial evidence. So you're referring to an overloading situation in RPI being a primary.
Oh, is that one of the reasons for the, for the solution for the issues that AT&amp;T has in the area?
So the gap and being overloaded, yeah. You gave various options in your materials at different locations, talking about AT&amp;T. But in terms of providing substantial evidence, compare it and showing why the selection was made and requiring or asking for use variance today of that one option. I, I didn't, I haven't seen details sufficient to support substantial evidence of why that one location would rectify the overloading situation and the gap situation.
They need to buy that. I mean, the, the ideal location is five hundred Federal Street because it does have a direct line of sight between RPI and five hundred Federal. So that is the primary, you know, reason and logic, evidence of the RF materials. Why they chose the location rather than, say, the Kennedy Towers, because that's a little bit too far away, so, you know, they have, they just couldn't get the same amount of coverage at that location as they sent to five hundred Federal. This will provide better, you know, improved coverage to Weston Point, in addition to the, the issue that they had at RPI. Like that is, you know, the locations kind of dictated by that existence site.
So how does distance and direct site? If you could provide some clarification on those components, how do they kind of factor in in focusing on this option?
I mean, the decision is made by RPI, we will go to each, you know, location, they give us an idea of like, you know, whether or not it's on provide the coverage that they need, you know, achieving the objective that they're going to have. And every, all the evidence that they had in front of them, the five hundred Federal Street building provides the best solution for really at the RPI site and additional coverage and improved coverage in Wester Point.
Now, you're saying presented to them, presented to who, to, to Centerline, to the final, by AT&amp;T RPI. Would AT&amp;T be willing to share that, that?
Well, they kind of do with their propagation maps, stuff in the text that we provided with our application, there was an RF justification report, and then there were propagation maps. Their colored map that shows you what the coverage is with, with and without the, you know, at each site, and then in particular, how the site at five hundred Federal Street would be improved by installing the antenna at that location.
Well, that's kind of a before and after situation, but, you know, when you're talking about distance, you know, how does distance, you know, not even referring to a, an equation, but does distance, how does distance meet in a signal?
I mean, a signal can only travel so far. I know if you were building in power, the, the area that the tower would cover, in fact, five miles would probably be more like two and a half feet. And the further away from the tower that you get, the weaker the signal. So, you know, I'm not sure the exact distance between five hundred Federal and RPI, but it's, it's close enough and yet far enough away for the coverage, it's going to be able to offload the signals coming from RPI. Basically, we'll pick up that and then transmit it out, and then it will also improve coverage and provide additional coverage to Wester Point, the AT&amp;T plus, which currently aren't able to get. And it's often for your side.
See, that's, that's what I'm, I'm getting at, I would like to, you know, have a comparison of, you know, X distance versus Y distance. Okay, it's stronger, but it's shorter. Red line of sight, those fully strained, whereas here, those, you know, one direction and changes twice, and then hey, can you provide any comparison among those options?
I, I don't have anything other than, you know, what the, our engineer provided us as far as the propagation maps. So I don't have anything additional than that. And I don't know if they base it on, so much on distance, per se, but signal strength.
Well, you, you, you said yourself, signal strength is based on this, but I don't know the exact, I mean, I'm not going to be able to talk.
I personally don't know what that is, I, you know, if it's covered in the, in the RF plot, the RF justification. I don't think they specify distance, but they do show you location and what the, you know, with the antenna, this is, you know, this is what the covered areas will look like. Without it, it's so much. There's a lot of, uh, gaps in coverage.
Well, I'm just trying to gather substantial evidence to make a decision, that's, that's all. I really.
And what additional evidence, what, what kind of report or additional evidence?
Well, as I indicated to you, you're, you're talking about two components, distance and direct line of sight. You have several options that you presented, and apparently, and, and that, general map. Looks very good, but it doesn't focus on those two factors that you refer to, and it would be useful by purposes, and I think for its purposes in both, to compare, okay, generally. You know, there's a distance of X or Y for these components, the direct line of sight changes two times, three times for these other options, it only changes once at Federal Street. It's not overly detailed, it's not requiring a monthly report, it's, it's very general, but I, to me, that would be.
As you care. Are we talking, this is the direct line of sight. This is also a competitive market where you need speed. Right, I've received quite a few phone calls of people that on the west of West Point, who have no hope. Right, this is going to improve that, right?
It'll improve, improve some, yeah.
By how much? Just ballpark?
I don't know what the percentage would be, I just, I know from, from looking at the, the, our propagation mass, that it will significantly improve the coverage in this area for AT&amp;T. That location is just a prime location in central to where they need to be to, to, you know, have the grid at five hundred Federal. Right there, and then you don't need to have site, something like that, maybe later on down the road.
So you're ranging here for technicians, being this be the one spot?
Yes.
That this would work there. Okay, thank you.
Have you, any other questions from the board? Okay. Start with, i- is there anyone here in the room? I'm sorry. For now. We'll, we'll throw it open to questions from the public, and then if, if there's anyone who speaks against the proposal, you'll have the opportunity to answer those issues. All right, thank you. Okay, apologies. Is there anyone here in the room that would like to speak in favor of the application? Okay. Angie, can the folks that are online participate? Okay, is is there anyone participating remotely in the meeting that would like to speak in favor of the application? Okay, moving on, is there anyone here in the room this evening that would like to speak against the application? And finally, is there anyone here, I'm sorry, is there anyone participating remotely that would like to speak against the application? Okay. At this point. I, another issue, a little uncomfortable because I'm, I'm working inside as best I can, our code, but more importantly, you've been instructed to pay closer attention to federal law, now. Can you just speak to the aesthetics of, of, of what you're proposing? Is there any way to mitigate that, to move the equipment back from the edge of the building, so it's, it's out of sight from the, from ground level?
We considered that, but the, the further back you go on the rooftop, the higher you have to have. And there's, there's a perfect, trouble will have to overcome, so then you have issues of antenna picking way up, and then when something like that, the closer we can be to the edge, the less, you know, it's actually less and more, and then these will kind of blend in, sort of, with the, with the, with the, on the, on the, in the building. So they would almost blend in with the same pole.
Okay, thank you. Okay, again, are there any questions or issues to be raised by the board? At this point, I think I'm going to close the discussion on the application and move forward to the SEPR. I don't call it a step. If you don't mind.
Yeah, you're there. So Chair, in regard to PLZBA twenty twenty four dash zero 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 five, as supported by the staff reports, I ask that the board find this proposal to be an unlisted secret action with sufficient information available.
Okay, would another member of the board like to? Second. I would second. If you have a second, and so all those in favor of adopting SEPR, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say no. In that case, we've taken care of SEPR. And now I'm going to ask one of the members of the board, if anyone would like to make a motion in regards to the requested variance, PLZBA two zero two four zero 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 five.
I will make a motion on that we approve the use of variance. I would go through the, but I'm returning it's a, as a wireless communication facility, they don't exactly apply, so how would we go about doing that? I, I don't believe it's the hardship for me. Yeah, so the fact. So the factors, essentially, and that fourth in the memo that this board can consider is whether there's an actual need for the antenna, which we discussed with respect to the coverage. I don't know that it was necessarily addressed out loud, but it may have been addressed in your package with respect to possibility of co-opation and any sites that already exist, and of the aesthetics of it. I know it's tough to, you can consider that to a minimal degree, it's not necessarily a basis for total denial that there could be conditions that would. So you would just, essentially, when you make your motion, which I know you argue, but it's part of that in support, you just press those three criteria, and whether or not you feel that there needs to be a so I would suppose I would draw my motion, and we can, as board, discuss the various different elements that we can. I mean, you can keep the motion on the table and have the second on the motion. Perfect, all right, let's do that. All right, so I propose motion to approve the variance as it is, I think the applicant has made the case that this is the appropriate location for this site without a significant impact on, you know, official assessment of the neighborhood, and agree with the location of a shorter height closer to the base of the
I'll second that.
I, I agree, so I'm at my comfort zone, discussing a variance involving a, a utility, but I think it's shown based on the discussions this evening, the discussions at last meeting, the materials provided.
I still maintain a view that use variance has not been supported by substantial evidence based on the factors explained presented today and last.
And so.
There's no further second, you can sit the floor.
Seems that there is no further discussion, we had a motion, but we haven't had a second.
I would second.
I say.
Sorry.
I missed you exactly. I know. Okay, Angie, if you don't mind, could you call the board? We'll move forward and vote unanimously.
On the motion to approve the use variance. EB, don't be, how do you vote?
No. Joe Normal?
I vote yes to approve.
Stephen Minor?
Yes, to approve.
Lady Dustin?
Yes, to approve.
Seth MacGinn?
Yes, to approve.
Okay, as you've seen, granted, your variance, thank you for your patience.
Thank you very much.
You're driving back to her, please begin our vote, and we'll get on the safe ground.
Thank you very much.
They're getting bad.
Oh, okay.
All right, move this along. Okay, at this point, we're going to move on to the first application under new business. We are going to discuss PLZBA two zero two four zero zero one four. This is a request for a use variance. The applicant is Mr. Andrew Donovan. Donovan, you're present. Good evening.
Good evening.
If you don't mind, could you identify yourself, please?
Sure. Can I go ahead and make a follow-up? My name is Andrew Donovan, with Engineering Firm, Andrew J. Donovan, P.C. I'm representing the owners of two floor, one, two, fifteenth street, and this variance request.
All right, thank you, if you would, can you describe the project?
Sure. So the project that we have is a building that has a history, has a commercial building. As of almost a short of a year, this would have been a conforming use in, in the, who's it, Commerce District. Unfortunately, and for various reasons, the building had one vague for seven years. And the owner now has two tenants that would like to occupy this building, and I'll say continue using, I know there's a discontinued, but continue using this commercial building. When it was, when the area was rezoned last year under the new chapter two eighty five, the, this parcel was placed in the resident, in a residential use zone. And so in order to be able to reoccupy this version for requesting these areas.
Do any members of the board have any questions for the applicant? Please order them.
Um, with this, our, with the reuse of the site, as commercial, are there any additional plan improvements?
The only improvements we're going to make is to the hard paved area out. Right now, it's a general poll off of fifteenth street, and we understand that the next step for us is to go to Bureau of Code Enforcement for the building permit, which at that point will generate conversation with Planning Department. We're going to propose to recreate the sidewalk along fifteenth street, as well as create a, a single curb cut into this, the front of this building to better control traffic flow in and out.
Do you have any preliminary plans of what that might look like?
I do not at this time, the conversation, I had a conversation with, with planning, and the general opinion was, how about we wait to get past this? And then determine what level of, what, again, we're anticipating planning commission, but it's not guaranteed that. So we're, that, that was, the general gist of it was, don't go too far just yet, let's talk about the zoning, the use variance, and then start to put together plans for parking area.
Do you are anticipating needing site plan approval from the planning commission?
In preliminary conversations, there is some exception, and I, I won't claim to know exactly where that exceptions can come from, but the way it was explained was that, given what's already there, that it may be, there may be discussion to take place with Bureau of Code Enforcement that won't require planning commission approval. That being said. That being said. We, I personally would be, uh, initially was anticipating that as part of the process. So we would just take whatever, you know, whatever recommendations significance of moving forward.
So I guess I'm gonna kick it over to to you guys if you. So, yeah, there has been a lot of different discussion back and forth. Um, this is a unique situation because the property existed in commercial. Form and under the old code, which I know is um. It's it's relevant careful purposes of actually considering the use variance criteria, but under the old code. Um, this would have been allowed with a full use and it would have gone to site plan review. Now with the new code, it does, it's not an allowable use, that's why we're here, and it there would not typically be. Um, site plan approval required for the property of this site. Um, internally, I know that. There was some discussion on this going to the planning commission, given the the length of time in which it has been vacant. Um, needing to get brought up to code in some aspect. I know there was a report um sent out. Yeah, indicated the sidewalk and drive-in because the repaving and certain parking area and selling new curb. And providing visible green space for all factors that planning department. Um, had kind of flagged as important aspect of this review either as condition. Um, in some form or nature, so what had been suggested was maybe to this board actually. Do a site visit and make those determinations. As of, you you know, as members of this board condition on any approval. But this this within this work's prerogative is how you want to handle it, you can make condition. Um, you could either table it and do the site plan visit and make the recommendations yourselves, there's recommendations. You can make recommendations um based on the factors that are here, but make it contingent upon the world. The planning department, if the applicant is willing to do some type of minor site plan. Approval with the planning commission and he's in agreement on that, then that could also. Be a resolution, we get it done this evening versus putting it out, so that's how I see the free option available. Right, yeah, I mean, it's my understanding that the use variance can only be dependent on things that are directly related to. Being used, not necessarily overall right aspects. Correct, but. Reference would be, I think, if you get to site, you know, the my reference would be, I guess, the word would be. That the planning commission has been docked site plan and was reused like they want to. And that was my conversation, I mean, just for transparency purposes, my conversation with the planning. Department was that that's what they're trained to do, whereas this board doesn't have as much experience in those aspects of it. Um, so I was a little bit uncomfortable having this board do the site plan or do the site visit and make recommendations. Um, so, I mean, in my opinion, my legal opinion, the. Beforeward would be to. If the applicant is willing to have it go. To the planning commission for review and doesn't necessarily have to be as intensive review as usual, but. Um, there should be some type of review that addresses these things, and I mean, it is relevant to the Houston that. You know, if it's becoming a commercial property again, then we need to make sure that it's. Co-compliant in all aspects, since members of the public will be. Yeah, I think other properties, a lot of things that I have are directly related to being compliant during driveway, continue a sidewalk. Um, parking would have to be or be outside pedestrian space, there's a whole nuances. Um, I think there is potential to be on just reviewing the code and it's a little bit out to interpretation on. That if uh five, five or more parking spaces were to be proposed as part of a new commercial development. Then that may trigger site plan review, so. That in itself of kind of approving this new use, because that's really what it is, uh, this variance. Um. There. There may be an interpretation in the code regarding the number of parking spaces that are being provided. Um, that would trigger that, so I guess I'm gonna take it back to you, how many parking spaces are there to be planning?
Once again, we haven't, I haven't begun the the code review, the site plan review myself. Um, I've got some general dimensions of the parking area. And it really was just, let's, let's get this process. Um, if if planning commission is for site plan review is the answer. And by all means, we're going to be able, we're going to pull together what we need to do, we know that this is not the end of the game. Uh, we know that we're gonna have to have some review by planning, we know that we've got building permit. To to have done, so that's why we're here tonight was to hopefully. Get us back on the books as a commercial, as a commercial use for the opposed uses. And then go to work on site plan and the building plans.
I don't have any other questions.
Let me see, yeah, couple of quick questions. How long has that building been vacant?
Uh, approximately five years.
So for the last five years, it hasn't been occupied or used commercially.
Correct, it's been vacant, yes.
Has the ownership of the building changed? I went there today, I saw the sales.
Yeah, the ownership has not changed, uh, it's been the same ownership for eleven or twelve years.
It's been what?
Same ownership for eleven or twelve.
But it is.
Um, if I might, I had Miss Jan Wong here from, I saw her picture on the on the sign, I can ask her if you would like. Hi, Jan.
Hi, hello, my name is.
Speak into the microphone.
Hi, good evening, my name is Yan Wang, I'm the landlord's agent. So now this property is for lease for rent. Uh, during the past five years, it's never been listed as selling.
So the building is not for sale, it's for rent?
Yes, my sign is on on the property now, since I think it's too comfortable, yes.
Can we go back to the parking lot for a minute?
Sure.
If that became commercially zoned or used or proved. You'd have to strip the parking spots. As opposed to just blacktopping and not striping, is that correct?
Correct.
You have no idea how many cars you would accommodate.
We know that the parking, the paved area, uh. It's almost the entire width of the property, so it's a hundred, a hundred feet. And we've got approximately thirty foot depth from um. From fifteenth street to, now we know that we've got to take a look at sidewalks and so forth.
Right.
But, uh, so no, I have not done a calculation. Um, of, for example, traffic pattern in and out. I haven't looked at any of that yet, uh, that was only to be, um, site planning, planning.
Has code been through this building since it's been vacant for so long?
Not to my knowledge.
So code has not been through it, it's been vacant for about five years. Alright, thank you.
Mr. Care. Go ahead. Sounds to me like we have possibility to make table, is that correct, Tom?
I I know.
Lot of smoke that hasn't been presented.
Right, it depends on the position that this board takes, so if this board takes the position that you have enough. Information to decide four factors, that four of any use variant. Decision, um, then you can move forward and make conditions on. If it were to be an approval, you could make conditions that, um, the building become co-compliant and. If the applicant's willing to agree to go to the planning commission for site plan review. Um, or if this board wants to make a determination on. Certain site plan factors that were put forward by the finding department. Then you can table it to be able to look into those issues and make specific recommendations.
I'd like to make a motion, table this until we have more facts. And to me, it sounds like we still have. And it sounds to me like. Doesn't exactly like to me, so, well, my opinion, I just think we should table it for now. Until we have more of information about this special plan.
Well, right now, it's not going to the planning commission unless that's agreed as a result of the granting of a variance, but it will go to planning. So it's not gonna go to planning and come back here different with more information in a month. And then with respect to any code, code doesn't have the ability to just go in right now, but once there's. People on their building permit issues, then there will be. They will have the ability to do it, so it's actually not, we're not ahead of ourselves here, because the thing that you're discussing, we can't even get to it. Till we decide how this is gonna go. Ultimately, we're deciding what kind of this state going to be, are we gonna conduct the site plan review with the continued. Conditions upon the use variance, are we going to approve the use variance? Um, on the contingency that they get site plan approval from the planning commission. All code is they would need from the building permit, or we're saying, yes, we're gonna approve the use variance, we're gonna rely. Solely on code when they get the building permits. Um, and our recommendations in order to enforce these things that I think we all agree we're looking for, um. Are those, or we deny the use variance. Those are the four options, I think, the four passed forward. Um, while I'm comfortable doing a a site plan review, I think I've got the the expertise. Um, I think as a vote of board, we should not be conducting a site plan review and leaving it up to the planning. Um, and relaying our concerns or, you know, things we'd like them to consider in site plan review going forward. Um, and I think they should go through that very public process, um, if it, we just leave it to code. Then it is a very private process as opposed to a full and transparent process where. A site plan is put forth before the public. Um, I think that's from a use variance standpoint, that has been vertical in the path. Um, it's the border between um residential and personal use on the sixth street, so I think. I think that it makes sense to uh approve the use variance, but make sure that. That transition, the pedestrian state, et cetera, is um accounted for in development of the site.
I want to continue the discussion.
Yeah.
Jack, you made a motion.
Mm-hmm.
To table. It it sounds to me like we, your your motion to table was. Uh, to table to give. Um, planning and. Planning the chance to do a site plan for you, but I think counsel pointed out, that's not possible.
None at this juncture.
At this juncture. So. We still have a motion on the table.
I would draw the motion.
Okay, uh, then we'll continue our discussion, go ahead.
I would still like to go. If we approve this process, we're still gonna get our. Code and still gonna get our information of plan, correct? I mean, I saw what we had.
When you said we are still gonna get our information, I I guess, you mean, we just have a voting board?
Yeah, if we move this.
If you move this forward and approve the use variance, then it's not gonna come back to this board, it's only go to planning. Next, and code to do better. It would be conditioned, assuming. But it is a condition of the approval as I stated to do those things, does that inspire?
We could approve use various contingent. Right, right. Upon a site plan and code.
Co- coming into code compliance, to be code compliant, and I think, I mean, I I keep saying this, but you're, so you're in agreement that.
That we, and and that was always mine, that was always my, that was my path forward, was that, once we. It passed this step, the drawings get completed, we submit to Bureau of Code Enforcement for the permit, um, given. Site conditions, it would then get kicked over to planning, um, and I anticipated the planning, planning commission review. For this, for the.
You haven't had a change.
Views have already been expressed by others. So again, I just before we get to a point of motion, I just, it's in the, um, page. Bottom of page three of the um. Not report, but it goes to, in this before use variance criteria, who and who wishes either. Brand hard deny or brand with conditions, if you could please go through each of the criteria and explain either how the applicant has or has not had. For the criteria.
Thank you. I have, I have a couple of questions about the property, have you, have you been through the building?
I have.
Okay. Can you? Uh, can you speak to what it would take? To to turn this property, including the building and and the lot? Talk about what resources would be required to turn this back to a. A residence that would fit within the zone, this is, uh, I'm sorry. What's that?
Single family.
A single family, so, thank you.
Yes, um, I'll start with the interior of the building, uh, the building itself. As with a lot of commercial use, there's been modifications, alterations made inside moving partitions. Um, changing certain bathroom aspects that in order to bring it back to. The to a residential use, um, there would be a a certain amount of demolition within the building. And a certain amount of reconstruction, recreating partition walls, um, making sure that the the bathroom facilities. Um, are full bathroom facilities within, the other thing that has happened over in the in the past is that. Um, there is no longer a working kitchen in the building. So in order to construct, recreate, um, the kitchen work, work in the. Tens of thousands of dollars in just doing the interior renovations. To the exterior of the building, um, again, we've got about three thousand square feet of. Hard skate paved area that in order to take that up. The pavement, the subgrade, then come back in and prepare that stove surfaces for. For green space for grass and landscaping. Um, somewhere in that, again, those tens of thousands of dollars tonight, and my numbers are back there, but I think I, I think I, I. When when we looked at this, um, we're thinking somewhere in probably that seventy thousand dollars, seventy eight thousand dollar range. Um. The owner has no intention to live there. And I think in my documents, I noted, uh, the value of the building as a commercial building and the value of a residential building. If we take the value as a residential building, you know, and then deduct the costs involved. Um, the economic hardship falls in that there it's, the owner would not get their value back for that property. If they were to bring it back to, uh, truly a single family home, so.
Thank you, I appreciate it, it's instructive for people. Who are attending and reading.
Okay.
Okay.
I have actually, based on on this. John's uh, um, conversation with you, um, the proposal now is to make two uses, a takeout restaurant and spa. Now, you already talked about the residential standpoint, uh, a lot of investment, uh, required reconstruction. Of a working kitchen, well, for a restaurant, you're gonna need a kitchen. And also, I I don't know how that meshes with the cost involved to split for two. Very different uses, uh, take a restaurant and a spa, so how does that compare, has been needed to make a residential?
In the, uh, with within the building, there, there is, um, there is a partition. That runs front to back through the building, that both tenants have agreed that. That divides the building sufficiently for them, so we are, will have. So we are, we'll have, we'll be looking at that from the standpoint of fire separation and so forth, to make sure that. We don't need to make huge modifications to that wall and to the, there's an opening now, but it would become a doorway. Um. As far as the kitchen goes, the commercial kitchen, the nature of the kitchen, um. The owner, the tenant will be putting that bill. So to bring, to bring the kitchen up, doesn't impact the owner, it's the tenant who was willing to move in there that would be, that. Paying the expenses to create that, that commercial kitchen in there.
And then you have two, um, uh. Needs for a significant amount of water, if you're about to spot a restaurant. How would you say that?
Yes, um. The. I don't. I do not, at this, at this point, I only anticipate, um. Uh, water supply, city water supply to be significantly impacted. Um, because it was once a spot, um, there's a hundred gallon water heater in the, in the cellar, so there are. Not that that would be functional for everybody, but there, there is enough to have been supported, um, the old millennium spa in the past.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I thought you.
Oh, I should just, um, before we move further, do we need to take our speaker and public comment if there are any other discussion questions?
I, I was checking the board to see if anyone else had a question, but yeah, now it's gonna move to the public comment.
I'm good.
For the public. All right. All right, uh, Mr. Donovan, if you don't mind. The portion of. Review where we're, where this opened to public comment in your application. You're gonna have the opportunity to come back and speak to any issues that are raised during the comment. All right, that works for you, thank you very much. All right, and so I'm gonna ask, is there anyone here in the room that would like to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone participating remotely that would like to speak in favor of the application? Good. Is there anyone here in the room that would like to speak against this application? All right, and finally, is there anyone participating remotely that would like to speak against this application? Okay, hearing nothing, I'm, I'm gonna close the public comment portion. And I believe we can now move forward with the secret.
Mister Chairman, uh, in regard to PLZBA twenty twenty four dash zero zero one four. As supported by the staff reports, I ask that, uh, uh. The board find this proposal to be an unlisted seeker action with sufficient information available.
Someone like to second?
Second.
We have a secret, we have a second, um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? There we go, taking care of the secret. And so at this point, if there's no further discussion among the board. Would someone like to make a motion regarding this application for a use variance? At twenty four twelve fifteen?
I would like to make a motion that we approve this use variance intended upon site plan approval from the planning commission. Um, I believe that the applicant has demonstrated that, um. There's sufficient financial evidence to, uh, support this experience. Um, there is not, uh, there's uniqueness for the property being between a residential and whose extreme commercial quarters. Um, that there is not hardship on the neighborhood by granting this experience. Um, with the change in zoning, um, there is an argument to be made that this hardship is not self-created. Um, and, um, it will not substantially alter the character of the neighborhood, especially with. Um, the property being brought into co-compliance. Um, through the site plan approval process from the planning commission.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Seven.
Jack, second first, Mr. Donovan, I'm gonna go back to you quickly before we vote on this. Does, um, does the motion come forth? With your understanding of what was discussed in the, the prior portion of our review?
It does.
And.
We said that, yes.
Thank you. Angie, if you don't mind, could you, uh, call a roll on the vote, please? Your motion to approve the application.
My motion to approve there at least there. If it doesn't sound good, I vote yes to approve, join normal.
I vote yes to approve.
If you mind.
Yes.
Then, then that's then, yes, to approve, that's okay.
Yes.
Have, uh, now this approval for your application. As stipulated with conditions.
Thank you very much.
Finally, we're gonna move on to our, uh. Our second piece of new business. This is PLZPA two zero two four zero zero one five. Property is, uh, forfeit, is forfeited to Fifth Avenue. We have an application for a use variance. The applicant, I'm gonna apologize, I'm trying to pronounce the name, our applicant is Mennder. Shing, how long? And you're working on behalf of William Fredette. All right, and. Um, if.
I'll introduce.
If you, if you please introduce yourself and, um, tell us where you live.
My name is Jimmy Conroy, I live at one twenty five Second Street in Troy. I'm a commercial real estate broker with, uh, Percher Hathaway Plagability, and I'm actually representing, uh, the Fredette, uh, family trust. In this transaction. Um, and, uh, this property is, uh, currently, if you're all familiar with it, it's currently, uh. The headquarters of Fredette Painting. Um, the Fredettes have owned this building since the late nineteen seventies. They had run their, um, painting operation, contracting painting firm out of the building for all over there since. Uh, the building had also at one time housed a retail paint and wallpaper store. And a garage to the rear of the property was at one time, uh, independently owned and operated, excuse me, independently operated. As a automotive, uh, repair garage. The, um, Fredettes, uh, have made decisions with this property on the market. And, uh, it has been on the market now for forty months. A very, uh, extended period of time, given the kind of. Property it is, a commercial one-story building suitable for a variety of uses. Um, but at the same time, it has suffered, uh. From conditions, location, various factors, the fact that it's a, a flag lot. Uh, it is very difficult to get access on the backside for bare intended purposes through the alley. Um, so the property is now listed at two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. That is considerably less than we, you'll find in other similar properties of this size and use in the capital district multiple listing service. Uh, I did a very quick survey of properties that had sold in Troy over the last two years. And the average sales price of those properties was over three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. I also further looked to find out whether or not there were any existing properties on the market. That were similar in size and scope, uh, and those prices were roughly four hundred thousand dollars. So you can see that this property is already, uh, by factor, its. Location, and use, et cetera, et cetera. Has had a considerable depreciation versus other properties of this size in the market. Um. Uh, Mister, uh, Correll, uh, Menander. Excuse me. Um, has found the building and it suits his needs. Uh, and they've come to the negotiation to purchase the property. So, uh, Menander is the, uh, yes, purchaser, or the need, uh, for, uh, for the building. Um. The, his use is going to be as benign as you can possibly imagine. Uh, given what else is allowed within the W two business classification. Um, his business is that of a small distribution site where he will acquire, um. Materials that is then distributed to convenience markets and gas stations throughout the capital district. I'll leave the further explanation of his business to him. But when you contrast the kind of use that he has proposed. To the kind of uses that are allowed within the zone classification. There's no question that the intensity of the land use is substantially less than what would be, uh, allowed. Such as, uh, cultural and community centers, childcare and daycare facilities, medical offices and trade schools. Bars, banquet facilities, brew pubs and restaurants. Cannabis dispensary and retail sales, dry cleaning and groceries. Light industrial uses or reuse of an existing structure and variety stores or hoofed establishments. Um, all of these are allowed uses within this district. Uh, and this district is a bit unusual to be zoned, the W two classification. There are two commercial properties that face Fifth Avenue in this location between eleven and one hundred and twelve. One is the Fredette building that we're talking about this evening, the other one is a former bar that has recently been closed due to shooting. Um, the predominant use on this street are two-story residential structures. Almost completely until you get the corner of one hundred and twelve street. So the predominant use in this neighborhood is that of a two-story residential. Um, it virtually makes this building. Not only a, uh, non-conforming structure, but a very difficult building almost to, uh. Uh, I would say, um, obsolescence of, of the, uh, the building in this neighborhood. So, a- as I restate, the property has been on the market for forty months. In that forty-month period, we have only had three interested parties move it toward a contract stage. The first applicant was unable to, uh, get finance. The second applicant was unable to reach terms with the, with the owner. Therefore, it was done, the third in this forty-month duration. Mister Carl, and this advocating. So I really asked board to use your view of what's really practical. For this building and for this yet, uh, site and recognize that Mister Carlos's use. Is probably the least offensive, um, that the property could have been put. After your consideration, now it's, as far, as far as the operation of this business, I'd like Mister Carlos to address that.
Before, apologies, I'm sorry to cut you off. When I, when I drove by the property, I didn't go down the alley, so I, while you were talking, I was trying to look at it on, uh. On Google Maps. Uh, Mr. Carlos, there was something you said about alley access? I think I saw, uh, there's a roll-up door?
That's right, there is an alley there, and it is currently used, uh, to deliver products, to the paint business.
Okay, so, so there.
And there is a drive through capacity too, so the garage actually has a door that opens in the front and one that opens in the rear. And allows a car or a small vehicle to drive through the garage and have access to be this car.
I wasn't, I wasn't gonna jump ahead to this, but I was gonna ask about it, you brought it up, um. What sort of vehicles are we talking about accessing the warehouse, are we talking about?
Let Mister Carlos just go.
Thank you.
Hello, good morning, my name is. Okay, the vehicles, I have a small van. We are two or three people, you know, together, working around. So I have a small distribution business around part of Detroit, they. And, uh, usually I get orders from customers, from convenience stores, gas stations, you know. And then next day, we deliver, we have like seven, eight orders pretty much daily. And then next day, like two or three of them, I'm delivering and go there to deliver. So like one city, or twice a week, my delivery comes from the whole day. And like, if it's come a pilot, you know, and I can use what they're telling you, or I can use any, I did a feedback in that's a paper me. And, uh, that's about it in the business.
And I believe the deliveries are made in panes, so it's, they're not any mall making that. It's not an eighteen wheeler, kind of, I'm not sure.
Understood, I'm, my concern is, if. If, if the use is approved as a warehouse or wholesale distribution facility, and. If your, your business takes off, you're incredibly successful, and you decide to move on somewhere bigger and better. The, the variance stays but the property, someone else can move right in and. You know, maybe they're not working with. With panel trucks and, and vans. So that's just something the board has to.
It's, it's understood, okay, uh, as I did mention though, the business, the building, the facility itself. Uh, is limited in, um. In that regard, and it's marked in the building. You're not going to have a very large distribution center locate at that structure. Simply because of its size, its configuration and, and its access.
Okay, yeah, I didn't see that, that, either the roll-up door in the alley or the door at the front of the building, I can't really tell.
That's an overhead door as well.
Overhead roll-up door, is there a, a loading dock? No, so you can drive right through, I'm ready.
Okay. It, it's slightly, it's slightly not built, at the rear end, there's, uh, an elevation difference of maybe.
Okay, but.
It's ramped.
No one's gonna back a tractor trailer down, down that alley to, to get to a loading dock?
No.
I've talked a lot, I'm gonna, um, throw it to the rest of the board. Someone else has questions for the applicant?
I have no questions, there's no manufacturing here.
No, no.
Oh, man, it's a warehouse district.
That's a warehouse.
Thank you.
Jack, uh, my understanding is, Mister Conroy, that. Uh, these are just gonna be this distribution center as a wholesaler. Delivering, uh, products to different stores.
Yes.
Right, we're not blocking anything larger than that thing.
That's right.
No big panel trucks, none of that, right?
Panel trucks will make the delivery to the building.
Okay.
However, however, distribution would be done by then. And, and.
The court, the person?
Yeah.
All right, and the, and the building, as I understood it, is still being used a little bit. But a lot of that building is not being used for months and months and months. Although we have a building decay problem in this city, and I don't want to see that happen. But, uh, that was my question, that this isn't gonna turn into anything other than what you're going to do for the rest of it. Thank you, sir, that is all, Mister Chairman.
Um, I have a question with regards to the reference that, uh, Jack mentioned about decay. What, uh, um, uh, renovations do you foresee needed, uh, in that facility to use it for the purposes that you've had?
There are, there will be some removal of internal walls. And open it up so that it's more, well, linear, or more open. Uh, these are. Uh, the only plans for, uh, renovation have to do with removing some interior. Uh, the only plans for, uh, renovation have to do with removing some interior walls. Interior, non-load-bearing walls to make the space more open. Uh, for staffing shelves, et cetera. Um, there's no planned expansion, no planned, uh, exterior modifications whatsoever. Uh, maybe a change in sign simply to change the, uh. Fact that his business is there and the Fred business is in that area. That's about the only, uh, change you'll see, the exterior of the building.
Uh, interestingly enough, if they were manufacturing something here, it'd be light industrial and it'd be a for this use, so I just wanna make that point. Uh, it's because of distribution. The question I have, because there is adjacent residential use, is, is what do you expect the hours of these deliveries to be?
Yeah, we have, we, we have ten to seven o'clock. The delivery is called like two o'clock, you know. And then my lady, my friend on that, she's seven o'clock.
So you don't have deliveries arriving at this facility earlier than, you know, seven AM?
No, I. Usually the delivery comes from, from sitting like two o'clock, one o'clock.
Yeah, in the afternoon.
Yeah.
Okay. That was my one concern is hours of operation.
At this point, I don't think there are any more questions, thank you, from the board.
Thank you.
Of course, uh, I'm gonna ask you to. Yeah, done, done, done. We'll be here, we're just done with this board. I'm gonna throw it open to public comment and, uh, if you don't mind. Hang on until, uh, until we've heard if there are any other concerns. And so, a- at this point, is there anyone here in the room to speak in favor of this application? If you would, sir, please step up and, uh, introduce yourself. Tell us where you live and use the microphone.
Ryan Rosen, I live on two twenty-five six ten.
Okay.
Uh, I got the city councillor for the area right there. I got a bunch of questions from constituents living right in that area. You guys asked all of it. You had perfect questions, you had the perfect answers to your questions. So, yeah, I'd love to see this take ability.
Okay. Thank you.
Can we, uh, what were the questions from your constituents that we got answered?
So, the main one I heard was, is it gonna be a marijuana distribution, which is not this property? Uh, what kind of trucks will be coming in and out? Um, are they gonna do major renovations and hours of operation? Seven AM, a little early, but I think. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, there's no one else here in the room? Is there anyone participating remotely who would like to speak in favor of the application? And, and I'm gonna ask, is there anyone participating remotely that would like to speak against the application? Okay, and so at this point, I'm gonna close the, the public comment in regards to this application. I'll turn to the board, last opportunity. Any further questions or concerns to be addressed by the applicant? Well, and so, um, it's time to move on to the secret.
Mister Chairman, uh, in regard to, uh, BLZBA. Twenty twenty-four, Act zero zero one five, supported by the staff reports. I ask that the board find this proposal to be an unlimited secret action and sufficient information available.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. There you are. And so I'll, uh, open it up to the members of the board. Anyone would like to make a motion in regards to the application for a variance at force. John McCann can make the motion to approve.
Uh, I foresee this as something that's need actually there. And like, there's a, there's a big building. Or if it wants, like, something like this happened, where it's all patterned, right? Take that building and that's why he's gotten the price at that. Prepare that to other single building, calling it a hundred fifty to a hundred thousand dollars. That's a big thing. People aren't going to hurt that building. People just sit there and rock. We all know what happened. My, my, my opinion here is I would just vote.
All right, Mr. Chairman, is it safe to say that you feel that, uh, the applicant cannot achieve a reasonable return? Glad that that lacked returns substantially, instead of traded by competent financial evidence?
Yes. Or, or catch the bad, okay?
Would you say that the alleged hardship of the property is unique and does not apply to substantial portion of the district or neighborhood?
Okay.
Would you say that the requested use variance in granted will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood? And finally, would you say that the alleged hardship is not self-created?
Not with, yeah, thank you, sir.
Would anyone like to second motion?
I would second.
We have a motion and the motion has been seconded. Angie, if you don't mind, could you pull the roll on the vote, please? Oh, apologies. Apologies, go right ahead.
Uh, to your point, earlier point, John, that this varies forward with the property, understand the applicant has. Indicated the hours of operation, I asked the question or want a discussion of. Should we have the, the condition of an hour of operation, or is there something in the code that already exists? That restricts their hours of operation, just keeping in mind the residential uses that are on that, that block, Jason's property?
So I do not know off the top of my head if there's something in the code that, that's worth the hours, most likely not. Um, you could make it a condition if you feel it's necessary. But I would caution him to be. Conservative and not too restrictive. So, I mean, I think within reason you can, but you can't say like, you know, you're only up. Five hours a day or.
Just, just on that point, I, I don't think it's necessary because the prior use for the paint. Uh, company, I'm sure that the frequency of, uh, and timing. It's probably as much or likely much more, was much more frequent at this application, so. I think it's actually improved, uh, or decreased frequency.
I, I think what's being proposed is, but it just the use of a warehouse or distribution. Tends to be evening hours, even though that's what the applicant doesn't intend to do. That's why I bring it up, because it's, it's not in relation to the exact.
Not that this will necessarily negate the issue, but with the use variance, it doesn't necessarily run with the land. If it went immediately within one year from warehouse to warehouse. Then the use variance would stay with it and the new person wouldn't have to come back. But if there's a gap of a year or more, then they do have to come back. Uh, so it's different from an area variance in that regard, but it runs with the property to a certain.
So, I, I believe the question before the board is. The necessity first to, to restrict the hour or. To add a qualifier to our approval that would restrict the hours of operation? And it sounds like, I, I don't recall the, the exact hour or minute I heard.
I'm sorry, it would be until seven PM? I'm sorry.
Actually, my operations is nine, seven, maximum. Uh, we are not, I'm ordering up, I can't work hard, like eight, nine o'clock, but then seven o'clock, you know. Yes, it's nine to seven. I think it's sometimes, we got specified Friday, even Saturday. Some days half, some days before, you know, Saturday is a half day. And Friday could be like seven, that's it.
Okay, so you, I'm, I'm hearing that you would accept a condition on the approved. Related to the hours of operation being limited from nine AM to seven PM?
Yeah, actually, I don't want you to put that condition, but I'm saying, you know, I'm not saying anything, you know.
He was saying that that's intended, you should prefer not to have a condition, but he's letting you know what it is. This word still can, if you feel necessary, you put that condition on. But again, I mean, for my, from a legal perspective, even hearing that, like, I, I think it needs to go outside of nine to seven. Because there may even need to come in early before something, you know what I mean? Like, you know, if it's seven AM to nine PM or something, then that's a little bit more broad and reasonable and not during. You know, nine, ten hours, looking for a super. But I think, you know, Lindsay made a point, he, he, you know, has a different opinion on that. But I think there needs to be a little bit more further discussion to determine if there needs to be a law to implement or if they're going to. Keep the motion on, I think.
All right, thank you. So I, I don't think we have to make a motion that goes that. I, I just, I thought stating the ground that nine AM, seven PM seems more reasonable. Seven AM, nine PM, I'm not, I'm trying to.
Like it's big. This property has been vacant for approximately forty months? No, no, sir, uh, it is. I'm sorry, uh, it's in concurrent operation with, uh, Fred's. They own it and they are using the building. Uh, as we speak today. They will be relocating, uh, once the sale is complete, but they do operate.
Mention during a forty-month period of time?
Yes, it's been for sale.
Spent for sale.
For forty, for forty months. And we've gotten free, gotten free offer.
Here's my concern. I'd like to go back to what Mr. McCann said about buildings being allowed vacant. Norman and run that. If they've been trying to sell this building for forty months and they have a qualified buyer. I would rather not see you restrict the hours of operation for the buyer. It's his business, it's his money, it's his opportunity. And the more business we can get in Troy. The more taxes we can have on the rolls and the more buildings we can have occupied. Should be our main focus. I would not hamstring this property with restrictive hours. He's got a freedom of opportunity. I would approve it without conditions.
Along the lines of what, uh, Mr. Reiner actually was, uh, brought up. Um, can you tell me, uh, the, uh, the, um. The current operations, uh, since it wasn't vacant forty months, it hasn't been listed. What are the, uh, frequency and hours of those current operations?
They vary. Um, there are occasions where they're actually conducting work inside the building to prepare for painting. Contracts outside, so it, it's a very, um, most of the hours, most ninety-nine percent of their day. They're out of there by four o'clock in the afternoon. Um, however, there are occasions where they might use the building over the weekend or late at night. To repair materials for their, uh, next day work or installation. I, I'm afraid I don't know specifically how many, how often that stuff. But they, they do make, um, use of the building. At odd hours, we consider odd hours, but only very, very occasionally, very, very rarely, actually.
So, you know, to respond to some of the constituent concerns that Brian has brought forward, that we asked about. Um, I would propose an amendment that we restrict deliveries to the building. Panel trucks are larger to the hours of seven AM to nine PM. So it's still allowed operations, employees to be in the building, um, but restrict. Loud beaming of trucks backing up and, you know, those larger trucks delivering to the site to really the hour of seven AM to nine.
So can, can we make the, uh, our condition that specific?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I have a question, could, could we vote separately on whether or not to add a change?
Yes, so what happens at this point if Lindsay has made a motion to amend? John will next ask if there's a second and then there will be a vote on the amended, uh, the amendment as proposed. If that gets, if that goes forward, then that will become the new motion looking to grant with the condition. If that does not pass, then it would just go back to the motion to grant the experience. But so there's two separate votes, one on the amendment and then the second either on the motion to grant or the motion to grant as a method.
Before I go there, all right, any other questions at this point? Let's move over for a second. So, I have no questions. So, we have a motion to approve, but we have also. Before we address that, we have a motion to amend. Mr. McCann will need to approve. Do we have a second? With that.
Wait, there. There was a motion to grant by McCann, there was a second by Mr. Minor. So now we've been a motion to.
Amend Jack's.
By Lindsay, to know there needs to be a second on that.
Right.
Okay. I misunderstood what you were saying, sorry.
At this point, I have not heard a second on the motion to amend. This is, this is a delivery hour.
This way, what I'm reckon, what I'm proposing is that the condition is. Delivery is panel trucks and larger, um, be restricted to the hours of seven AM to nine PM. Yeah, yeah, but it's not our corporation, you know, the build, the business can operate outside of those hours, but it's still literally. Seven AM to nine PM.
I'll second that. So, we have motion to amend the motion to approve. Angie, if you don't mind, can you call the roll on the motion to amend Mr. McCann's motion to approve?
Uh, on the motions amend, Jack McCann, uh. Is there a motion? How would you vote?
No.
John, oh, huh?
I vote no.
Steven Minor?
No.
Lindsay Defton?
Yeah.
Doug McGinn?
Oh, yes. So, the motion to amend, the motion to approve. Has been defeated, agreed to. So.
Another motion, bring up. Me, by Mr. McCann. Or, and there's been a second approved.
And if you have a motion on the table, is there any reason for any further discussion? Okay, and so, we have a motion before, before the board to approve. The, uh, requested use variance without restriction. Angie, once, once again, perhaps from the last one, would you call a roll, please?
On the rule on the motion to approve, uh, the use variant without, without, uh, any amendment. If you done this, how we would.
I vote yes to approve an unrestricted, uh, the unrestricted motion. John, huh?
I vote yes to approve.
Steven Minor?
Yes, to approve.
Lindsay Defton?
Yeah.
John, uh, Jack again?
Yes, approve. There you have it, um, so the use variance application has been approved. Which is successful.
Okay, thank you.
So, if we must, gentlemen, at this point, I'm gonna thank you all for your patience. And for your service for fine city. At this point, I'm just gonna ask for a motion to adjourn if we have it. We have a motion to adjourn, we have a second, second, I, all of you in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you all. Thank you very much. Good luck. Thank you.